They have tires cheap there.
No kidding?
They're discounted, aren't they?
That's why we elected you. You can deduce those.
I want to know I was in the top of the box. I wasn't.
We're on air.
We're on air.
On this brilliant one.
We'll now call this special workshop meeting Jacksonville City Council to order. You have a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting at your places. And I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favors? All opposed? Right, Dr. Woodruff, we'll turn it over to you at this time to present the topics for the night.
Mayor, members of council, as we come tonight on our, I think it's actually our eighth, maybe ninth meeting on the budget, these are the items that are left for you to decide. And hopefully this evening we'll be able to get direction and potentially even the adoption. In setting up the meeting today, we made sure with the city attorney and the clerk that if you find at the end of this meeting you are ready to adopt the budget, that all the necessary advertisements and so forth have been met, and you could in fact adopt the budget tonight. The loose ends that we'd like to cover, the loose ends that we would like to cover this evening include general compensation to get your final decision on pay grade scale adjustments, cost of living adjustments, the wage adjustment fund, the fee schedule, and then tax rate and budget adoption. On your agenda though, you noted that there is a closed session. What we would recommend is after we finish all of the budget items through the tax rate, that if you're comfortable with adopting the budget, we're going to need a little time to finalize the actual document. So we would recommend that you go into closed session, and then when you come out of closed session, we will reopen the meeting at a point in time when Gail has had an opportunity to finalize all of the fill in the blanks that are necessary for the budget. Now, John, can you and Carmen need to clarify anything on what we're doing this evening?
No, sir. If they come out of closed session and we still need to wait, we'll come back into regular session, recess that until Gail comes down and you can call it back to order, ma'am.
Okay, good. Pay scale adjustments. As you recall at the last meeting, one of the recommendations was that you adopt a policy that each year the wage scales would move one half of whatever cost of living increase is approved. And the example was that if you give a 2% cost of living, all of the scales would move Mr. Warden asked the question, what is the financial impact and could we calculate that? First of all, let's talk about salary savings because that's really what gets impacted when you have vacancies. What are salary savings? When we put together the budget, we assumed that all 556 positions will be filled every working day of the year. And therefore, every department has full salary as if there was never turnover. Well, we know that turnover does occur. So salary savings are something that you find in the non-departmental budget of your general fund. So for example, in police and fire and so on and so on, you 100% fund the positions. That's a positive number. Under non-departmental, there is a negative number for salary savings. Why is it there? Because we really don't know how many police officers are going to be vacant, or how many firemen are going to be vacant, or how many building officials are going to be vacant and so forth. So you can't budget that in a particular department. Typically, we budget about $350,000 for savings in turnover. We also know from previous discussions, the largest place that we get those salary savings each year is in the police department. Being conservative, which is what y'all like for us to do, it's especially what Gail likes to do, is this budget from the very beginning was put together with $94,000 of salary savings, not 346. Because we were hoping and assuming that you would address the salary issues, especially in police. Now, at the end of the year, you know, of FY '19, we may actually have 150 or 300,000 in salary savings. But we did not think it would be a good budgetary practice to assume that turnover would stay just as high as it has been. So being very conservative, if you went to the non-departmental part of the general fund, you would see in that $94,000 in wage savings, not 346,000. We looked back at your request in January, February, and March of this year. There were 20 positions that were vacant that we applied this to. There were other vacant positions such as crossing guards, but that's not a position that you're... So we looked at what we would call the real full-time positions. Some of those were maintenance workers, some of them were account people, some of them were police officers, some of them were firefighters. So they were the people who would get a substantial salary. Due to turnover, that produced $53,000 in savings in those three months alone. Now, you can't multiply that times four and say, well, for the year, you're only going to save $200,000. Because I would tell you, you know, vacant positions rise and fall. You'll have a month where you only have three or four, you'll have another month where you might have 15 or 20. So the bottom line is, we can tell you with certainty that those 20 positions, we saved $53,000. How did that happen? The person that left, make up a number, was making $20 an hour. The person who came in did not start at $20 an hour. They have started at $15 an hour. So that's where you get your savings. Now, how much of that would be absorbed by shifting the pay scale? You know, some of it. We can't tell you though that it is $1,000. What we can tell you is it's a portion of that 53. 1% in our example going back, if you did adjust it, adjust all the scales 1%, 1% of $53,000 is not that much money. I don't do math in public, and since we're on the air, Gail will tell you what 1% of $53,000 is. Now, apparently she's not going to tell us that.
Mr. Thomas Scott?
I'm sorry.
Wow. But that's the minutes.
This is take two. Mr. Thomas will tell us what 1% of...
Watch your reading, these are tricky questions.
So that's one question that sometime tonight I'd like some direction on. Wage adjustments. Also, let's just walk through the numbers. The cost of living, as you saw, 1.8. What I'm recommending is 1.5. But these numbers changed from what you saw before. The number that I had shown you before was the general fund, 333,000. That included the police, the P-1, 2s, and corporals. Since you've adopted a pay plan for them, that 333 was recalculated by Gail. And so a 1.5% for the general fund is $270,000. Now, that's not only salary, that's salary and benefits. So... And you may have seen this in the paper. Anwassa is recommending and maybe have approved, have you all actually approved this? A 2.1%. The county, according to the assistant or the deputy director, I'm sorry, the deputy manager, 2.4% is being proposed, but the county commission did not address that. So the options would be whatever you want to do. Remember, my option, number one, was a 1.5% across the board plus the wage adjustment fund of $300,000. Option two, match what Anwassa does. Option three, do whatever Jerry Bittner wants us to do because he's usually the matchmaker on coming up with different formulas. By the way, that was supposed to be funny and y'all didn't laugh.
We smiled.
Did you?
Yeah, I smiled, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Thomas did not smile. Again, what is the wage adjustment fund? It is to address other wage inequities that we have in the city in addition to the wage inequities and issues that we discussed with the police department. From a fund standpoint, roughly 300,000, it's not going to address everything, but it's a start, water and sewer and other funds. And how would it be managed and what would be the guidelines? You saw this the last time. General fund budget, the base budget, health premiums, department issues, and JPD step plan, you have all approved. That means that so far, out of the general fund balance, you've agreed to take roughly 1.4 million dollars. The cost of living and the wage adjustment, you would be taking almost $2 million. I would remind you, traditionally, this is what we've taken from the general fund balance. And you can also see what each year we've added to the general fund balance. Comparisons again, and there are your options.
Question.
So what we'd like to ask you to do is tell us what you want to do. Yes, sir.
The management adjustment fund. I think you said before you'd hope to have that study complete by October.
Yes, sir.
When would those changes become effective?
They could become effective on whatever date because in the budget book, one of the things that you're required to do is state when certain things become effective. My recommendation would be that they would become effective October the first or be paid retroactive back to October the first. Now, let me clarify that. October 1st is not actually the date. It would be whatever the beginning of the pay period is after October 1st. Is that how you'd want it stated?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And if we're not finished with the study until November, then we would simply make that retroactive to that date. But it would not be retroactive all the way back to July the 1st.
Did you have an idea about that?
No, I did not. I was just looking for clarification. I'm prepared to make a motion to, for option one. So will.
And that includes the scale adjustment also?
That's what that is.
No, this is just wages. It doesn't have to do with the scale adjustment.
What's option one?
Option one, yes. It has to do with the adjustment fund, but it doesn't have to do with the scale moving. So if I confuse you, I apologize. Option one is a 1.5% across the board effective with the first pay period of the new fiscal year. As part of that, a $300,000 fund would be established for wage adjustments to address inequities in the current pay plan.
Well, maybe I jumped the gun. Is there any preference in taking action on these items?
Is there any preference?
On the way to scale.
I think what's partly confusing you've got here, one is pay grade scale movement, which we haven't brought up, you haven't brought up tonight, I mean, other than talk about it. Want to go back to last week when I believe there was a one-half of whatever the cost of living, I think, is what you would propose.
Right. Let's just drop back then. We'll go back to the... So the first thing we would like to ask you somewhere, okay. This is the first thing we would like to ask you to give us direction on. Are you in favor of establishing the policy that every year your wage scales, that's the entry level and the maximum for each pay grade, will move one half of whatever the council gives in the cost of living?
Would you mind explaining why that's a positive thing to do?
Yes. We have wrestled for many months with the issue of police pay. And as you will recall, one of the reasons why we have gotten behind on police pay is the entry level salary has not moved. The city, the personnel policies for wages are very clear. The scales only move when the city council says they move. And over the last 10 years, they've moved twice. By not moving every year, then they don't keep up with inflation or they don't keep up with other people's competitive wages. I will tell you, I'm not in favor of those scales moving equal to the cost of living. Why? Because if you're passing along a cost of living increase to an employee, but the scale moves the same amount, then all you have is wage compression at the beginning. So my recommendation or thought was, whatever you do, and by cost of living, it could be, like this example, a 2%, then it would move 1%. If on the other hand, in the past, you've given a $1,000 increase across the board, then the scale would move $500. That's intended to keep us over time moving competitively with salaries.
And that keeps you from running into the problem that at some point you have to make a real big move.
Well, that's one of the reasons why we presented to you a half-million-dollar adjustment just for the police department to keep them competitive.
And you know, I apologize I missed the last meeting, but I did watch it and I gave the mayor some comments. You know, while I agree with the step program in adjusting the police department issue, I think that needed to be done. I kind of feel like this conversation should have been a little bit more comprehensive in terms of, we had a Springstead study, we invested some money in compression already, and how, I guess the scale adjustment is just another word for compression. It's the same issue, entry level salaries is as they move up the scales. The 300,000 and then this, to me, are sort of the same thing, just separated. I just, I'm a little bit confused and not educated enough to really make these decisions right now personally without really having a comprehensive discussion about what these really mean. I really don't understand how that is actually solving compression issues between the departments, between the positions. I just wish it would have been more of a comprehensive conversation as it relates to the study that we had done and money we've already invested in that, which I think was over a million dollars.
Yeah, the only problem with that million dollars spent was that we didn't follow the recommendations.
There was a lot more money to be spent, as the mayor said. We should have continued that process. And I'm just thinking through that, is this just another mandate without having a much further conversation so that we don't run into another problem two years down the road? Again, I'm not opposed to anything, it's just for conversation. It just seems like, Bob, I'm a little bit confused how these two are different, the two different, the 300,000 and then this, as it relates to solving the actual compression issue. That's just my comments.
But let me also give you some comfort this way. Nothing that we're discussing here impacts the adoption of the budget.
Understand.
Now, Gail's over here having a stroke when I said that, but let me explain that. All of this is money that we are talking about spending from your general fund balance. What you could do is you could say, yes, we are going to set aside the 300,000, but we're not going to authorize the manager to expend any of it until we have further workshops in August and September. Or you could simply say, we're going to adopt the budget, we're going to pass on this particular, whatever you decide is the cost of living, and not set aside the 300,000, and still have the budget workshop, the salary workshops in August and September, and then take it out of the general fund reserve.
So for clarification, is this the 300,000 or is this a separate?
Just, let me give you an example this way. The scale, every job in the city is on one of the 35 grades, as you remember from previous presentations. Every one of those, every one of those pay grades has an entry and an exit salary. So let's just say that the entry salary is 30,000 and the exit salary is 50,000. All this does, and let me, that's not the way to say it, what this does is it says that instead of it staying stagnant at 30,000, that every year that you give a cost of living, that's going to go to 30,500 or 31,000 or 30,300, whatever you give on a cost of living. So let's be specific.
I see what you're saying. So you're saying currently now, any COLA does not get added to a yearly salary, it's just a one-time payout?
No, 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 no. It gets added to the employee's salary permanently. What it doesn't change is the pay grade for the next person in the door.
Oh, I see, I see.
So let me give you, I'll give you one more example.
That's what you're trying to change.
That's what we're trying to change. Let me give you one last example before I give you the next last example, okay? Let's say that the three of us are all hired to do the exact same job, but we're hired three years apart. Mr. Thomas is hired in 2015 and he started at $34,000. Mr. Warden is hired in 2016, he's hired at $34,000. I'm hired in 2017, I'm hired at $34,000. What that means is that all three of us were hired at the exact same number. It's not necessarily bad if your competition and the cost of living is not moving forward. But if the competition, when Mr. Thomas was hired, was paying 34,000, but the next year they were paying 34.5, Mr. Warden will look at us and say, you know, Mr. Thomas is a good-looking guy and I love this organization, but I want more money. He may go someplace else. So that's the purpose of moving the steps. That's completely different than the wage adjustment fund.
And you're saying that number's only $300,000 to do that?
No, it, I'll be quite frank with you, it's a start.
Oh, okay. What's the impact of that? Do we know?
The impact of this is, as we were showing a minute ago, it's difficult to tell you. What we can tell you is if you moved it 1% this coming year, then on this example of the 53,000 savings, where people left us at a higher pay, they're in the same pay grade and they're starting at the starting salary, the cost would have been $530. But that's, you never know what...
That may be.
What that may be.
I got you. But it's never going to be.
Now, I want to ask this, what you're proposing of changing the scales, would that apply too, to the police?
No.
As you said that, right. Okay, so I mean...
We've taken the police out of this formula completely.
Right, okay, so they're...
They're...
Taken care of, we think.
They're taken care of.
And this is totally conditioned upon the council approving the cost of living?
That is correct. So if, for example, one year you say we're not giving any cost of living, the scales don't move.
Or we could change the factor at some time in the future, too.
Well, and next year you can say, you know, we're not gonna, what has been, what has been my fault, and I, and I mean it was my fault, I should have been asking y'all year after year after year, do you want to move the scale or not? To be honest with you, I'd never thought about it. So since the policy was unless you speak, it doesn't get done, I want to reverse the policy that unless you speak, it does get done. But this is not a big deal. If y'all are uncomfortable with this, just tell us what you want to do for this one year. Next year, we'll make a note, bring it back. Totally up to y'all.
But you're saying this year, you're projecting it to be that number?
No. What I'm saying is that if this policy had been in effect for FY '18...
That's what it would have been.
It would have been this number.
Okay.
With the, with the cost of living that we, let's say that we approve a cost of living tonight, would that then immediately change the scale for July 1? Is that what you're proposing?
Yes, sir.
Half, half of whatever the cost of living?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But listen, of all the, all the decisions we're asking you to make tonight, this is not the biggest decision. So whatever you're comfortable with.
I mean, they're all important. And it's an important topic.
They're important, they're important.
Because it makes sense, what you're saying.
So do, so going back to Mr. Bittner when he was going to make a motion a few minutes ago, should this all be lumped together in the same motion?
You can do it any way you want to. This issue was not included in his motion, though.
I will clarify that.
Please.
I had thought before that we had discussed it as a total. So my motion is to include the scale adjustment and the, what do we call it, the management, administration fund?
Adjustment fund.
Adjustment fund. That is my motion, to accept the manager's recommendations.
To include, to include you, one and a half COLA, right?
Yes.
Now, is that to include having further discussion on the final positions that, what you indicated earlier, we can allot the money for it and then have a more comprehensive...
If that's the motion Mr. Bittner wants to make, that can certainly be the motion.
Who taught you how to interpret a question?
If you're including the other $300,000 in your motion, can you include the fact that we're going to have a conversation about how that's going to be applied before enacted?
Basically, a report back...
Am I saying it correctly?
You're going to do an internal study to look at those positions and can you clarify that?
Yep, let's, here's what I believe that we're asking is this.
Close, we're close.
The motion is, part one, that we adopt the policy that whatever cost of living is given, one half of that moves the scale. Part two, that a 1.5% across the board cost of living will go to all employees other than those on the police step plan. Number three, that a $300,000 adjustment fund will be established. Number four, that that adjustment fund will not be parceled out until we have additional workshops and council is comfortable with that concept.
The 300,000 is going to be written into the budget, but we really don't know where those adjustments are going to be made until there is a study, internal study done to identify. And that's, I think that's where we're...
Yes. In other words, the results of the study, council wishes to have a review of it. I'm not, I'm not opposed to that as long as we're, that motion, that inference does not mean that we're talking about individual salaries of employees.
Well, that's going to include some of that because that's what the Springstead study did. We want to make sure...
Talking about positions is one thing, talking about individuals is another.
I mean, position. We're not talking names.
You're talking about position, right? The position itself.
Yeah, and let me give you an example.
We don't care what the name is.
What we would not, and I'll just use Carmen as an example. What you would not see is that I'm recommending that Carmen Miracle get a $721 paycheck.
Correct.
On the other hand, what you might see is that in sanitation, for the following reasons, I'm recommending that we take, pick a number, $40,000 of that 300,000 and address wage compression in that department. But what you wouldn't see is that Joe Jones gets this much, Sam Jones gets this much, and so forth.
Yeah, there you go. The positions, not the people, not the persons. That's my motion with that understanding.
One additional question. Historically, we've given the COLA to folks who were on the payroll as of January 1 of 2018. Is that still the practice we want to?
We would recommend that.
I think that's fair.
Say that again.
You have to be on the payroll by January 1st, 2018, to be eligible for the COLA.
So for example, if a person just came to work today, they would not get that cost of living increase.
If that's been policy, I would stay with the policy.
That's been policy. Carmen, you got all that?
I think so, yeah. But I'm sure John and Richard can make sure I've got it right.
The only question I have on the pay grade scale movement, are we doing that just for one year or is that supposed to be subsequent years as your proposal was?
What I would suggest to, to keep it as simple as possible is that for FY '19, we're approving that. Now, later, next year, we can discuss that.
I understand the motion's...
Just need a second.
Need a second for the motion, if you remember what the motion was. Not everybody speak at once. Not everybody speak at once.
Still cipher.
Second for the purpose of discussion?
Yes, sir. Discussion, please.
What were the four parts again? Because it's four now. You started with three.
I just about forgot it.
It was about three, it was three that became kind of four, right?
Okay. The first part is that for FY nineteen, you agreed to move the pay grade scales one-half of whatever the cost of living adjustment that you give. Part two is that all employees who are eligible will get a one and a half percent cost of living adjustment. And by eligible, meaning they must have been here January first and/or they are not part of the police pay package. Part three is that you establish a three hundred thousand dollar wage adjustment fund. And part four is that the management will bring back a report before any of that wage adjustment fund can be expended to employees. Well, the goal of having that by October first.
Yeah, no. All right, question, question for me on our discussion here. Where, where are we landing at now on this whole situation with the county raising taxes? Is, is that gonna impact us?
The answer is you saw in one of the, uh, the letter, obviously, from previous information. If the county raises the, their tax rate three cents, and due to revaluation, the city will lose four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in sales tax. You might as well say a half million dollars.
Four
Four hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Now, you will actually lose that over, you will actually lose that in phases. As you remember the budget note, Gail explained that your, your sales tax is impacted not immediately, but in arrears. So for the FY nineteen budget, you basically are gonna have one-fourth of that. But for the FY twenty budget, you will impact all of the four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Now, that's assuming that, number one, that they do in fact pass on a three cents. For every penny they pass on in sales, in, in property tax increase, it costs the city right at a hundred thousand dollars. So if they only pass on a one cent raise, a one, a one cent tax rate, it's a hundred thousand dollars. If they pass on four cents, it's four hundred thousand, not three hundred. And regardless of what they do on tax rate, we know that we will lose one hundred and fifty-eight thousand plus or minus dollars in sales tax due to the fact that their property values increased and that formula has not changed.
Right, just in the current state. How does, how does all that affect the, the total budget for us?
Well
With those outlooks, I'm
It reduces, it reduces your revenue projection. But I will also mention to you, and, and Gail has always been conservative, we only budget for the coming year the money that we actually saw collected in the previous year. So, uh, but the reality is of your potential non-reserve money, you could be losing a half million dollars in two years.
So, not to jump ahead, but in looking at what you're hearing today with Mr. Bittner's motion and the potential loss of the four hundred, almost half million dollars if the county moves in that direction, does that include the one fifty-eight in that?
It does not include all of the one fifty-eight.
Okay, so let's just say six hundred thousand. Do you foresee an impact on the tax rate?
I think the four hundred and fifty did include, include the one.
Okay.
I think it was a hundred thousand for every penny plus the hundred and fifty.
I may not have understood your question. In FY nineteen, you will not lose the full, the full four hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Okay.
In FY twenty, you will lose
Right.
Four hundred and fifty-eight thousand. What you, what I thought you asked was this. Assuming that they are gonna raise taxes three cents and knowing that the one fifty-eight, how much of that impacts this budget? And it's basically twenty-five percent of it.
Right, and then including what we're proposing with the step and, and what you're, you know, all this encompassed, are we looking at a neutral tax rate?
Yes, I, I would say to you, you know, if you want to jump to the
And I don't mean to jump to that, but for me to make this decision, that's the question that I need to know.
Let me answer it this way. I don't believe any of the discussions we're having tonight should impact raising taxes. The staff recommendation on taxes is that you, you adopt the tax-neutral rate. The tax-neutral rate, it doesn't mean anybody's taxes are going up or down. What it means is that that's the money that we need. Glenn, can you drop us, I know we have a motion on the floor, but can you drop us to the very last slide that covers property tax? Let's look at the values here. On your tax rate, your current rate is six four two, and it generates roughly twenty-three point two million. The revenue-neutral rate is sixty-four sixty-eight, and it generates twenty-three million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand. Drop down to the very bottom, the current budget is twenty-three million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand. So by adopting the revenue-neutral rate, you will be exactly where your budget was asking. Now, I talked to a lady today who asked about, you know, which tax rate and everything. I said, well, at the bottom of the, at the end of the day, it comes down to this. Your, whatever rate the council adopts, that may increase your taxes, it may reduce your taxes. Because this is the odd year where we're dealing with not just tax rate, but we're dealing with tax value on your property. So if you have a hundred thousand dollar house, let's go back a slide. If you have a hundred thousand dollar house in the city, you're currently paying six hundred and forty-two dollars. Under the tax-neutral rate, your tax will go up on a hundred thousand dollar house to six hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty cents. But if your hundred thousand dollar house went down in value, even with the tax-neutral rate, you're paying less.
You're paying less money, yeah.
But if your value of your home went up, then your taxes are gonna go up too. So that's why, uh, my answer to you is all of the discussions regarding compensation, that has to do with how much you're taking out of your fund reserve. We do not, as your management team, we do not recommend that you do anything on tax rate other than adopt the revenue-neutral rate.
But it does bring a concern in terms of, you know, as the county continues to potentially raise rates and we continue to lose sales tax revenue, I mean, that's really concerning. Because it went from two million to three million, now it's three and a half million of money that should really be in the city's coffers.
Well, Mr. Bittner
And that, and as, you know, we're limited for growth, our tax base really can't grow. You just had reevaluation, so some people benefit from that and a lot of people didn't. So you have a tax increase plus a property tax increase. You know, I just feel like we really need to be cognizant of that. And that's why for me, that tax rate is, is an important number as we move forward. And if we can do things within our means, then, you know, I can support it. But, you know, we certainly can't just keep asking citizens for more.
And I, I agree with that.
You know, when we're not getting more that we should be getting from sales tax revenue that's being generated here in, in Jackson.
And, and that's, that's still something that we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to pursue it. We're gonna have to keep doggedly pursuing.
Hard decision to make. All we can do is plead.
Yeah, I'm pessimistic about the sales tax situation because they're looking at a tax increase issue. You think they're gonna get, willingly give up money?
No.
They don't have it to give up, they're, they're telling, they're signaling to me that, hey, we ain't got enough money to, to meet our obligations, uh, so we certainly can't, can't give the city any more money. Now, we've talked about, you know, doing like we did in the past where we made the county whole, at least for, for the, uh, for the school system, and give a million dollars back or whatever we did years ago. I, you know, I don't know. You know, I don't, I don't see them at this point being open. I may, I hope I'm, I hope I'm not being overly pessimistic, but I think I'd be realistic in this case.
I think you, I think your realism is probably pretty much on point. But we are gonna have discussions, uh, upcoming discussions with the commissioners on, on this very issue. That's what the letter promised us, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Bittner made a comment last week, which I think he will recall quoting Mr. Bittner, you should not be rewarded for raising property tax. And what's happened is set aside the hundred and fifty-eight thousand. That wasn't anything that anybody voted to do. That's just the reality of revaluation. But if the county commission does in fact raise the tax rate, they will be, pardon the expression, they will be gaining for every penny, a hundred thousand dollars of sales tax from the city.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It continues, the gap continues to widen. Where it was two million went to two and a half, to three, and then to three and a half, and four, that really the city should be collecting, therefore allowing us to continue to provide the services without having the ability to grow.
True.
Now, going back to your, to the motion that's on the floor, that, to me, that motion has to do with how much of your fund reserve do you want to spend? Because I would say to you again, we do not recommend increasing the property rate above the revenue-neutral. We can either, we can go back to whatever part of this conversation you want to go back to.
I think that needed to be clarified for me in my decision process.
I hope we never make a decision, excuse me for talking with ice in my mouth, I hope we never make a decision that we've got somebody confused on the motion or confused about what all the ramifications are. I hope we always continue to make, and I will always support somebody if you need time to, to think about it, to, to make a decision. Now, that's, it's, it's so important to our citizens that we make the best decision we can. You don't make it if you're confused, so.
I totally agree with that.
So you don't have to apologize or, or feel like you, you know, you felt like you were holding us up. You're not, so.
You can make the decision without the information unless you're clear on it. Exactly. So, uh, I guess other discussion?
You know, I, I think the thing about this situation that makes it so difficult for me to accept is, I guess, one, the magnitude. You know, you're talking, we've done five eleven. You're talking, what was it, two sixty, two seventy?
Two seventy for the
Two seventy.
For the COLA.
The adjustment was really three forty-five, if I remember my slide. Instead of three hundred, yeah, it was three forty-five. So there you're up to, you can't see it either, but one point three million additional payroll in your budget, when that's something that's gonna come around next year, too. So it's nothing, you know, it's one thing, one thing to do to have a, to use your fund balance for a one-time expenditure, say a capital expense or a, a payment on a loan that's gonna expire. But this is something that's gonna live with us from here on. And that's, that's a big amount for one year, changing one year. It's, you know, to say we can do it within our means, if that's the possibility, I mean, it looks like it because of the fund balances we've ran in the past. When you run a four million dollar positive, a three million dollar positive, obviously, there's some room. But
Mike's gonna catch up with it.
It's
And some of that money we've rolled over has been at the expense of not taking care of more employees, too.
Oh, you mean the, the increase in our fund balance was because we didn't?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Again, I, I'm like Mike, I don't wanna, I don't wanna put ourselves in a position where we feel like we have to raise taxes on people because, you know, taxes are getting onerous between the county and the city. It's, you say six forty-two for the hundred thousand, you've forgotten about the county's part, that's six hundred and seventy. So, yeah, it's really thirteen, fourteen hundred dollars. And if you got two hundred thousand, it's twice as much. You know, I, I certainly would not be comfortable changing the rate at all. I mean, we've been running a positive on the rate
That's the next subject.
To, to just, right. But I'm just saying, I would need real assurances this isn't gonna come back next year and say, oh, well, if we're gonna do anything, we got to raise the rate.
Well, and one of the things, Randy, that I've thought about through this process is when we, when we look at this step program or the adjustment and the other adjustments that we'll, we'll be talking about, it is a comprehensive plan that we started some time ago that we sort of had some gaps on and therefore causing some of these wage issues within it. So it is a little bit separate of an issue rather than raises, but it, you know, position adjustments. So that, that for me has been a little bit better of a clarity because that, that has needed to be done. I mean, it's just one of those economic things that you have to do in order to stay competitive and keep people on, on your rate, but, um, it's certainly something you can't keep doing. So it's, it has to be done, though.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any other discussion? Here, none, all in favor of the motion, sixty-five percent, aye?
Aye.
We have two votes.
Aye, three.
Three, and I'm gonna break the tie in favor of the motion, it's four.
Then that brings us to the next question, which is the tax rate. You've heard the discussion on the tax rate. Do you want to stay at the current? Do you want to go to revenue-neutral? Or do you want some other? Now, we put it not, that we're suggesting rounding up, we're just showing you the difference.
Does the current rate give us a balanced budget? Didn't I hear you say twenty-three, three something?
Nothing balances the budget except the fund balance.
That's right, that's true, that's true. Thank you, thank you for that.
Well, the current rate and the revenue-neutral rate, it's only a difference of what, a little over?
If I hit it one more time, it's supposed to show us something? Okay.
Less than three hundred thousand.
There you go, I think it's the hundred and seventy-two.
Yeah, the difference between the current rate, according to Gail's math, the difference between the current rate of six four two and the revenue-neutral rate of six four six eight is a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars.
Well, for what it's worth, knowing that we're gonna get flack anyhow when the county raises taxes, we'll get criticized that we raised our tax, we'll have to explain. I'd rather not have to explain, yes, your tax rate from the city is slightly more because of the revenue-neutral rate, which nobody understands, so I wanna say let's keep it just at the current rate, period.
Second.
And that's, and for clarification, that's six four two.
Whatever the current rate is, yes.
Can I ask a question? I, I, I might be ignorant of this, but it'll be the first time I was ignorant of something. But is there any opportunity for us to just have, enter into discussions with the county on this about being held harmless on the sales tax if they do increase their property tax rate?
Mayor, I think you can, you can have, how do I politely answer this, John?
Let me cogitate on that and I'll get back with you.
I used to work with a guy named Bennett, words like that.
I have some, a concept, anyway.
It all comes down to political negotiations.
Well, I like to think that we've developed that kind of, uh, Well, I like to think that we've developed that kind of, uh, relationship where commissioners, that they, they could understand the problems that we're facing are no different than what they're facing. You know.
I think we would all agree that, that the county commission is not doing anything intentional to the city. You know, there are unintended consequences. They have financial challenges, that's the reason why they're talking about raising their property taxes. I don't believe for a second that any of them, until they read the letter that the mayor sent out last week, even realized that a raise in their property tax rate was going to have a negative impact on sales tax distribution. I don't believe for a second any of them ever thought about that.
And I'll tell you the reason why I asked that question, because it did come up in a political conversation between myself and somebody else, so. Maybe it needs to be pursued.
And her.
So the motion.
Yeah, the motion.
Six-four-two.
Six-four-two.
Seconded him. Somebody seconded him.
It's Washington.
Beat me to it. All right, all those in favor, sixty-five percent, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
The only other thing that we would like to do, uh, I believe, Gail, did you have copies of this? As I said earlier, we apologize for not getting this in your.
Yeah, I got one. I was just gonna sit him to work this. Yes, they need to save them because this is part of the budget lines.
Yes, when we finish the discussion, if you will hand those back to us, because we will be adding this to your budget book. If you will look on page eleven, in this document, if it's in red, that means a change. If it's in black, that means there's no change. You'll notice in fire inspection fees that we're recommending two new fees, an after-hour inspection fee and a construction inspection fee. Those are both special event and construction inspection after hours. Recently, we have had a, a number of special events where people did not even realize that they needed an inspection and we had to call an inspector in on a Saturday before the special event could occur. So these are, you know, the, the fees. You can also see changes to the third false alarm, the fourth false alarm, the fifth false alarm. You can see the sprinkler fees, we're trying to, uh, simplify them. You can see the fees across there. Any questions on the fire fees?
I, I, I can't.
You're trying to make people take their alarms out?
Yeah, I can't support, I'm sorry, I can't support them.
No problem. Well, let's take it at the top. Can you support the after-hour, the after-hour inspections?
Let me just talk about false alarm fees. As a business owner, and I've had to pay a bunch of these hundred dollar fees. The wind blows too hard, the alarm goes off, or there's a bad sensor. And I'm, it is really, it's a.
Police fee, yeah, I don't think this is, this is for the fire alarm, I believe, I'm not sure.
It's the false alarm fee. That's, that's what it is.
There's one in police and there's one in fire, though. I think the burglar alarm is in police.
I'm sorry?
I think the burglar alarm is in, in the police department.
Okay, this is fire, this is fire.
Oh, it's not the same?
Oh, okay.
No.
Oh, okay.
What page is the one for police?
Okay, well, we can wait. If that's, that's the one that I would have a, if it jumps that high.
It's on twenty-nine, going next to twenty-nine. And we're not talking about changing any of those fees.
Okay, I was gonna say, that's, that's just, mm. Yeah, I've never had a false alarm.
These are fire fees.
Still, I still think they're kinda on it.
Something's trumping this. I mean, obviously, you're having a problem, right?
That's correct.
Must be somebody pulling fire alarms somewhere.
Well, I'm not so.
Okay.
This is, this is a decrease?
It's an increase in.
The sprinklers have a false alarm.
Sprinklers are deep, that's a false alarm.
Double, two and a half times, and then three times.
Within a thirty-day period.
Within a thirty-day period, right. Oh, I, I see, oh, they've changed it, but we, okay.
With the avalanche of false alarms fired upon.
Mayor, to be honest with you, I can't answer that.
Not that many?
I don't think it is, not that we bill for.
So why, yeah, why are we raising?
Well, how about if we do this? We need to get the budget adopted. What I'm gonna do is simply withdraw all of these fees from fire and at some future date, we can always amend the, the budget. So we'll bring these back for more. The next one let's look at is on page, um, on page fourteen. Since it's under fire, we're going to just take everything with fire and not ask y'all to vote on that at all. Nothing under fire.
Eleven and twelve is out, is that what you're saying? Eleven and twelve.
The next, yeah, the next page we're gonna ask you to actually look at then is gonna be page twenty-nine. We're asking you to, we're simply, this is nothing but petty cash nightmare.
Coin.
Yeah, so we're just simply saying, round it off to ten bucks, be done with it.
I'm certainly good with that.
The next one is on page thirty-seven, and you see nothing there. We will be bringing to you at a future date the fees for the marina. The next one, under solid waste fees. Kerry, if you and Wally will join, I need to bring a chair.
When do you have, do you have any idea when you're gonna come up with a cost on that?
On the marina? Yes, I do have an idea, and as soon as I figure it out, I'll let you know.
I've already had some requests.
No, realistically, we've already done some surveys and the numbers were just much higher than I felt comfortable recommending to you. So at, you know, at a time, probably in August or September, we'll be back. Because the, the facility is moving along nicely, but we're not gonna be ready to open until December or January. So. On the solid waste fees, the dial-a-truck, you'll notice, no cost to residential customers. Must have active sanitation at address for which truck is requested. Now, that sounds kind of odd, but if you have a vacant lot, you're not paying a sanitation, you're not paying a sanitation fee. But we've had a number of people who want to use the dial-a-truck so that when they clean off all of the debris from their, from their, uh, field, the city is absorbing that cost. So what this is really saying is, if you want the dial-a-truck, you must have an active account with us. You can't be a vacant lot. Seem reasonable? Okay. Special pickup fees. Residential small businesses building material may be disposed of by scheduling a dial-a-truck or to charge of fifty dollars per cord. Now, Kerry, you want to get into explaining these, please?
Yes, sir. What we, what we found out is, as we're expanding our customer base on the commercial side, and I'm just talking about the commercial dumpster service, we're getting a number of requests from commercial businesses for extra collection, collections similar to what they have on the residential side. But we didn't have any fee schedule for that on our present fee schedule. So what we've done is we've, we've split out residential and small businesses because they're paying the same, same monies for the service. And if you look on the other page, we have commercial services now. The, the expenses that we're charging for commercial services are for the expenses similar to what we're doing for the residential, except we don't give them any leeway as far as number of items that are out or where. But they're paying, they're paying the exact price that we want them to pay for it in order to, so that we can pay for what we're, the services that we're providing for the commercial entity.
So saying it differently, as Mr. Worden pointed out to me, on page forty, you will see the current fee. What page thirty-nine and forty does is it doesn't change the fee for residential.
That's correct.
It simply breaks it out. These are the fees for residential and small business. These are the fees for commercial.
Yes, sir.
It's about the same, but they're just, uh, you know, I've noticed the dial-a-trucks, dial-a-truck's not an option under commercial. Um, you know, just, you don't get some of, some of the things you get free under residential, you don't get under commercial, the way I looked at it.
That's correct. Now, the top of page forty-one, recycling dumpster service fee. Commercial customer without city refugue service, recycling only. Let's explain that.
Well, what we've had presently, I think we have two or three customers now. What customers have been asking for, and the commercial customers have been asking for recycling dumpsters. And we don't have a, a service relationship with them because some of them have compactors, the large compactors that we don't service. But they have requested recycling containers in order to recycle. And we felt it was better if we gave them a recycling container. We're not generating any income and they're not paying for that particular service. So we felt that allowing them to have a recycling dumpster and charging them a fee for that would be appropriate under the, under the, the fee schedule that we'd like for, for council to approve.
And what we're not doing, we're not saying here that if you're already a customer of ours, that you're gonna have to start paying for recycling. So let's take, for example, if you're a restaurant and you have a, a dumpster account with us, then you get your recycling as part of your current bill. But if, on the other hand, you're one of the big boxes and you don't have a dumpster service with us, you have the compactor service, which we don't provide, and you want us to take care of your recycling, then we're gonna charge you a fee for that. But this is not a sloper, a slopery slip or vice versa for starting to charge for recycling.
Does it say you're gonna give them a dumpster?
No.
They have to provide their own containers?
We will be happy to rent them the.
Yep.
Now, now, let's take, for example, if you're a restaurateur, we will rent you the dumpsters in addition to providing you the service, but we do not rent them the recycling dumpster, correct? For example, if I'm a restaurant and I'm already have an eight cubic yard garbage dumpster and the city is providing them the service. And they want a recycling dumpster, do we charge them for that recycling dumpster?
No, sir, we don't.
No. Do we charge them for the pickup?
No, sir, we do not.
But if they're not getting garbage service from us and they want recycling, we will charge them a monthly fee for renting the dumpster and for picking it up.
And you'll pick it up for thirty-three dollars a month?
Yes, sir, and then if you, uh. Yes, sir. That's per, uh.
It says cost per month, it's thirty-three dollars, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it should be, that should be per month, not once per week.
Collection once per week means we're gonna pick it up, we're gonna charge it once a month.
They do a great job, man.
Yes, sir, and what you, and, and this, this recycling dumpster service fee of thirty-three, thirty-seven that we're charging for collection runs in conjunction with, if you turn to page forty-two, if you look down, uh, and it talks about, uh, recycling dumpster rental rates. You know, if we're providing a dumpster for you and we're collecting that dumpster, we're also charging you a rental fee for that dumpster also.
And while you're on page forty-two, you notice that we are recommending a five-dollar increase for the commercial dumpster rentals per size. Currently, we rent it at two cubic, and, and you're not required to rent from us. But the cost of the dumpsters are going up. And I'll be quite honest with you, we want to rent as many dumpsters as possible because once you buy that eight-hundred, nine-hundred dollar dumpster, it's good for years. I mean, it, it really is a revenue stream we want to encourage. And I know Mr. Thomas is gonna say, well, if you wanna encourage it, why are you raising the rates? That's a good question.
Well, and, and I'd like to just add is, we're, we're raising the, the rental rates on the dumpsters, but we are still very, very, very competitive with any of the other organizations, the waste industries or the waste management. So raising the rates as we are, we're still very, very competitive.
Thoughts?
What is this clean-out thing?
What, what that fee is, sir, is a lot of times we get calls from, well, we're getting a lot of calls now from commercial customers where they put construction material in their dumpster or they'll throw, someone throws furniture in their dumpster, items that should not go in the dumpster. A lot of the businesses don't have the means to get that material out. We can't dump it in the front-end truck because it causes some mechanical problems as far as hydraulics is concerned. So what we do is we take our boom truck and we go over and we clean that dumpster out. And because we're using a special type of equipment to do that and we're taking away from our residential customers that boom truck to do that, we feel it's necessary to charge them for.
But you're gonna service a compactor? We haven't touched compactors.
No, I mean, when you, when you say compactor, we do, we do clean out compactors. We can do that. All you have to do is literally just pull it out and clean it out and just, and then push it back in.
We don't, we don't collect them.
Right.
But, and in fairness, what, what happens out there is a lot of people find innovative ways of getting rid of things on other people's property. And as Kerry said, uh, we had a call in the office not too long ago where an eight cubic yard dumpster, the guy came in on Monday morning and found a couch sticking out of the top of it. It wasn't his, but like he told, like he told me, he said, look, my wife and I, we can't get that thing out. Can you send somebody over here to clean it out? We did it free. Now, if you want to, you could say from a customer standpoint, we're gonna continue to do that free. On the other hand, you could say, you know, we're gonna start charging.
I, I wanna clarify something too when we talk about compactors because there are different kinds. You know, you can have a two, four, six, or eight cubic yard compactor. We do service those and we do dump those. The larger ones, the forty cubic yard dumpsters, we, we don't service those.
Seems like, still seems like a dis- it looks like a deal to me. Hardly that you can dispatch a, some sort of forklift or a, or a something over there for seventy-five dollars including manpower and the cost of fuel and cost of that vehicle or whatever.
I don't think you're breaking even.
But, but hey, if you're, if you're doing it for free now, then if you're charging seventy-five, at least you're getting something for us.
Now, that's Clemson math and NC State math.
It looks like NC State to me.
Got a point. On page forty-five, water and sewer. Wally?
Yes, sir.
That's actually our fee.
Oh, that's Gail's fee.
What had been happening is when we get called back, we were charged in twenty-five dollars. And inevitably, everybody had an excuse why they had to call us back and we ended up refunding those fees. So we're just gonna give them the first one for free and then charge them on the second.
Now, do you wanna know the real answer?
Call back for what?
Well, first of all, what's a call back, Gail?
Um, if we went to turn the water on and the water's running inside and we say, oh, we can't leave it running because then you'll have flooding and then we have to go back when there's somebody there, that kind of thing.
The real reason why Gail is suggesting it becomes free is because every time they call my office, I waive the fee. So she said, if Richard's gonna waive the fee anyway, let's just allow the agents downstairs to waive the fee, which is good customer service.
Free to Richard Dr. Woodruff.
But it is good customer service. Page forty-six, Wally?
Yes, sir, we're proposing to add a septic disposal fee. Currently, we have, uh, it started off with just one or two haulers that had contacted us that were having difficulty. So we started allowing them to dump, um, you know, septic, they had pumped from somebody's septic tank into our system. And we really didn't have a fee in here, so, um, Mr. Dever helped to come up with something that fit into our fee schedule and it really was, um, a, a deal. And we started ending up with a lot of, um, others desiring to discharge. And we started ending up with a lot of, um, others desiring to discharge into our system. And what we realized is that, um, really, this is septic that's coming from outside of the city. We're having to treat it, and it's not something we're really set up to take. We literally allow them to discharge into a manhole. So it's, you know, it's not the best situation. So if we're going to do it, it needs to be worth us doing it because sometimes we have to come back and, and clean behind them or, or do things we wouldn't otherwise have to do for our customers.
Why would we wanna do it at all?
Well, let's talk about that. The other thing is, the, the characteristics of a septic tank when it's pumped is very different than a typical two-thousand-five-hundred gallons. On a scale, and I'm just gonna use my hands as an example, from zero, a typical two-thousand-five-hundred gallons out of a home, the vast majority of it has no human waste in it at all. It is shower water, dishwater, whatever. On septic, the twenty-five-hundred gallons is all, for all practical purposes. It is extremely intense. Our goal is to also ask you to agree that come December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, we no longer accept any.
I agree with that.
Because why? Our system is set up to serve people who are on our central sewer system, not septic tank. Now, in fairness, I, I have talked to Jeff Hudson at Onwasa. Uh, the two members who are here know that they have now authorized a study so that Onwasa can consider taking this on. But whether Onwasa accepts this in the future or not, my recommendation is that we notify all the haulers that come December thirty-first, you gotta find somebody other than the city. It's not our problem to fix somebody who's not inside the city, who has a septic tank problem. Don't wanna be cold-hearted, but again, they don't have anything invested in our system. We're charging our customers, you know.
I agree with that.
Let me ask you a question, Dr. Woodruff. Was one of those areas of, uh, that they were dumping in, in the Georgetown area?
Yes, sir, it was.
Okay, 'cause I've gotten some complaints about that.
And those were actually, some of those were approved, you know, because we have different locations depending on, but, uh, you are correct, one of those was in Georgetown.
So this is just till December?
Correct. Now, even after December, maybe there is a septic tank here in the city that we haven't identified yet. We would charge them this rate.
And then down to the wastewater-generated sludge and the, uh, non, or the sewer non-significant sewer, uh, industrial user permit fee and annual renewal fee. As I was going through this, I realized that those hadn't been updated since ninety-one and nineteen ninety-six. So I just updated those to today's dollars using a converter. Um, you know, we really don't use those a whole lot. Matter of fact, I can't think of the last time we applied any of those, but they could come back that we do need those. But we didn't want it, you know, if something came up, did not want that out there, you know, from ninety-one, and we had not updated it.
Sewer, sewer jet fees, eighty-two, and?
Uh, I did look at that one, and, um, that one, I do not think is that far off. I don't know, it, it could be that that one had been updated at some point, and it just didn't get, you know, the comments. But I went and looked at the FEMA reimbursement rate for a, a jet truck, and then figured demand power we have, and it's not far off.
Wally, keep going.
And then we have, let's see. I don't think those are proposed changes. I'm not sure what happened there with the, the line, but the camera location fee, I think it was a fifty-dollar setup fee and two dollars per linear foot. I think that, I, I think that's the same as it currently is, even though it's lined out there. And then, if you'll flip over, the next one's on page forty-nine. And I'll answer for Gail, but this is based on the two and a half percent. Oh, sorry. Two point two-five. And then on page fifty, this is the system development fee that we had the, um, public hearing on at your last council meeting. So this just reflects the fees that were identified in the, um, system development fee analysis. So these are the fees that you approved moving forward with. And then, um, to keep the language standard, you'll notice on note five, I reference the hydraulic meter equivalents established by the American Water Works Association, and that comes straight out of the system development fee analysis. And then you will see, if you'll move to page fifty-two through fifty-four, uh, a lot of these, we are actually proposing to delete. Um, these are the sewer service area fees that we had put in one time at one point for certain projects, and the projects were defined. Some of these, in talking with the consultant, really should've been rolled up in our system development fee analysis and was. So we incorporated those, although there are a few outstanding that were not included, so we left those. And many of those are because they are, um, for a very small development area, if that makes sense. So those were not included in the system development fee analysis. And you'll notice that on the, um, let's see, on page fifty-four, the piney green service area, the sewer portion was, that was the, um, largely generated by the project that we shared with Onwasa, or a portion of it. And all of that project and the reservation fee was included in the system development fee analysis. So the sewer portion came off. We had done some work out there for water, to provide a water line to Patriot Park specifically. So, and that did not get included in the system development fee analysis because it was for that specific development, so that does stay on here. And I think that, um, and again, I, on, uh, note four, uh, again, I, I referred back to the same language that was in the system development fee analysis with the hydraulic equivalents, so that we're consistent there.
The document before you, we'd like to modify it this way. We are removing from the requested fee schedule the changes on page eleven, twelve, fourteen, and fifteen, having to do with fire fees. All of the other recommended changes, we still recommend to you. We will bring back the fire fees when we have a better opportunity to explain them.
So you're requesting that we adopt a fee schedule with that?
With that modification.
Modification, okay. Motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Before Kerry leaves the table, I, I think you're aware, but I don't know that we have publicly, uh, informed you that he was recently promoted to the Assistant Director of Public Services. Now, I still call it Public Works, but he is now second-in-command of that overall department that has about two hundred employees and a multi, 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 multi-million dollar budget. Very proud of him and what he's done. He's done a phenomenal job over the career. He's been with us since he was thirteen years old.
And he works thirty hours a day.
He works thirty hours a day. But, uh, please join me in.
One of my successful hires.
Couldn't let it go, could you?
For the record, Mr. Bittner was twenty-two, and he hired Kerry at age thirteen.
So, uh, that's all we have to cover as far as this is concerned. And, uh, so we're gonna take a recess, uh, before we go into closed session.
You wanna go ahead, Mayor, there's a possibility, go into closed session so you can eat while you're talking about that.
Well, that's, I guess that's the order we should go in.
Do we wanna consider adoption of budget? Is that also what you're wanting?
That'll be, when it'll come out. Take a motion after you go into closed session, if you want to make that motion.
Okay.
Recession, rather.
Make a motion to go into closed session.
All is in favor?
Aye.
One?
Hit it.
Okay, well, we're back in session, and, uh, no action taken in closed session, so.
Just mention one thing, if I may, Mayor, about the closed session. I'd like to, to mention that in past years, we've had the attorney and the manager, in preparation for the evaluation, prepare a written memorandum for our review of accomplishments and goals for the following year, for the next year.
So you want them to do the same?
I think that's a good idea. They don't have enough to do anyhow.
All right, so you have before you a copy of, uh, or the ordinance, or the item, looking at the adoption of the two thousand nineteen fiscal year budget. We're being asked to consider the budget ordinance, the fee schedule, and the amendments to the capital improvement plan. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Dr. Woodruff?
If you look at section eight, taxes levied for the public, the general fund tax rate will be point six-four-two per one-hundred-dollar valuation of taxable property, which is less than the revenue-neutral rate, which council could have adopted, of point six-four-six-eight. So again, if this is adopted, you will keep your tax rate as per, as per the FY eighteen rate, not the revenue-neutral rate. This rate is lower.
All right, gotta get a motion to adopt the budget ordinance.
Mayor, I'll move that we adopt the proposed budget ordinance, fee schedule amendments, the capital improvement, uh, plan as, uh, as, uh, presented.
I'll second that.
You have a second? Any further discussion?
Just like to mention that, having sat through quite a few of these budgets in terms of not only sitting as an observer, but as a preparer, I'm gonna comment, commend the staff, the entire staff, particularly the manager in the finance department for what I think has been a excellent presentation of key issues in the budget and good examples of, of management budgeting are contained in this document, and I endorse it.
Thank you.
I totally agree with Mr. Bittner. Thank you very much for all the hard work on, on this preparation of the budget. Any other discussion? Here, now, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I would, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn at this time.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.